I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Thank you all for coming. Please silence your cell phones. Again. We can listen to them vibrate instead. Yeah, the text instead of an email. Alright, we'll go right straight into this. This is time for public comments. Regarding issues matters or matters not on the agenda, but within this jurisdiction of the city council, the Warrick Public Comments Period is not intended for a question and answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. Council members, when recognized by this mayor, may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken during the city council during the public comment section of this meeting, except to direct staff to prepare, report, or place an item on future agenda. If you're here, please speak from the podium, state your name. For the record, providing the comments, please address the council as a whole. If you're not, if you have documents, present them. Please provide minimum of seven copies. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Is there any public comments at this time? I don't know if we have anything on Zoom or anything. Nothing? Nobody? Chirp chirp? Okay. Then we will go right straight into what we're here for. This is the city budget for fiscal year of 21, 2022, and 22, 23 budget documents available online, of course. So do we want to start off with you, Rheta, or who do we want to go? Who wants to be the first batter up?
First of all, thank you for coming out this evening, spending your Tuesday afternoon to talk about budget. One of those exciting topics we get to visit. And I have a quick little PowerPoint that Arthur's going to share on the screen for the viewing audience this evening as well. But kind of in, you kind of have a pocket. You like to end, we kind of have a colorful, welcome to fall. I thought we had a little positive, positive upbeat because if you watch the news, it's not all, all good news for sure. So anyway, I just kind of wanted to walk you a little bit through the budget process, so kind of take where we've been, if that's alright. And so it began back in April 30th of 2021, when all the department heads spent many, a couple of months reviewing their needs and stepping levels. And they gave to the finance director their budget requests. And then in May, 26th of 2021, we had a special meeting. We kind of verbalized with all the department heads here, the kind of their needs and challenges that they have within their departments. And sorry, I get kind of nervous. Would you mind if I just, or?
Go for it. You're over six, you're over six feet, so you're good.
Um, thank you. And so anyway, on May 26, 2021, we, if you recall, we kind of had a special meeting and the department heads were here, kind of. And they spoke to you kind of on their needs and challenges that they've had this year with COVID and, and what, what the budget would include. And so we had that meeting and then we kind of had a little pause here. But by August 3rd, we reconvene with the finance committee with the budget documents. And we had two meetings with the finance committee with the recommendation being on the meeting of August 16th to come to the full council in another special meeting and kind of recap where we're at and also give you, you as the full council, a chance to give your input and maybe we can address your concerns that you might have in what the budget is doing, are expected to support over the next two years. And this document will change. It is a fluid document. You'll go through a strategic planning. And again, that, that really is a driver of your budget in the ultimately. So the budget just kind of follows your strategic plan when, when that's finally adopted and updated. And then what we're looking for, if things stay on track, we are looking for tentative adoption date on September 7th. So so our first round to the finance committee, we were looking at, we took all the kind of, all the needs that were from the departments. And we had a fairly large deficit in the general fund. And so the finance committee, we kind of went through that and kind of walked through the budget a little bit. But the recommendation from the committee at that point was like, you know, can you look at it again with the department heads and see if there's a few things perhaps we can trim? And so went back to the department heads and these, I just kind of wanted to go through how things were trimmed, so you know what was cut out from the department head request. And one thing that was evaluated was the HVAC system. It could, is an eligible project under the Old Goals Park Grant. And so right now, Public Works is working on that. And that grant will not fully fund the HVAC, but we'll backfill once we get the bids in, you know, it could be up the HVAC project was, I think, leave the engineering estimates were between 220,000 and 230,000. I mean, you never know what it's going to be till the bids come in. The old gold grants, correct me if I'm wrong, there's about 180,000, a little less than that. And
How much? I'm sorry.
About 180,000. So we'll need to backfill on that out of capital reserves when the bids come in. But then you know exactly what you need to backfill at that point. We looked at Christmas decorations. I guess it's not too early to be talking about that, but Ben really wanted to buy all new Christmas decorations for downtown. That's about $45,000. He thought the decorations could last a couple of more years. And it might be a great public-private partnership, perhaps to get, you know, maybe some shared, some shared fundraising in that also. So that might be, but he thought we could cut that. He was looking for 25,000 for a flashing sign for traffic safety. And that's basically the signs, kind of what sellers, you go by, it says, you know, road construction or slow down or, you know, flooding or whatever it is that they would alert. We looked at that in purchasing this June or May-June kind of time period. And at the time, he couldn't get the sign because of commodities. He really couldn't get the product he wanted anyway to kind of order it and close out the last fiscal year. But if it is deemed that it's more urgent, he'll come back when he gets that information and requests that sign. But that was, he estimated at the time it'd be about 25,000. Another cut was, they, they have a standing in the budget, 75,000 every year for roofing repairs. City Hall roofing does need to be repaired, but we also have a generous city hall remodel budget that we feel would cover the roofing and it will tie it all with the same, same roofing product from that full remodel of enclosing the atrium and the ADA, ADA accessibility project. And lastly, was cut was 200, and, and this is a rough estimate, and I think the numbers will vary on that, but the intent was to put a placeholder here for the reading pool and filling that in. And so that was cut from this period. Doesn't mean it can't come back or come back because it's a separate project, but it's just set aside. So from those cuts, we were able to realize savings of 395,000 in the general fund and 22, 23, 325,000 in the general fund, which put the current year revenue less the current year expenses gap at 543,000 in 21, 22, and about 380,000 in 22, 23. Any questions on that? Am I on the right track? Keep going. Alright. So got, made these changes, went back to the finance committee and had some areas of agreement. And so received direction that it's ready to bring back to the full council, the budget as it stands. The committee understands that the adoption is now September. At that time, we were in August. It could be as late as the second meeting of September. I think we're real close that we might be able to bring it back on 7. The committee may or may not accept the budget is changeable, but we, it is, it's a moving document. I think there was frustration that costs had not been fully developed for the urban campground at that time. We do have some, and I know our city manager is certainly working on that. And we'll go over kind of where there is some set aside right now in the budget for that. Council members and legislators may not be of full consensus on the budget adoption, and we understand that. The committee was a little bit split on what is an acceptable level of general fund deficit spending. And the committee at the time was able to shift into 22, 23, the procurement of another police patrol car. I mentioned that one had just been delivered and was, that was delayed from 2021. And that the trieb vehicle that should be on order now would be yet another vehicle this year, so that one could be delayed into next year. So we didn't make that cut, but that's probably something we could still give them. So, so I kind of wanting now call out things that are in the budget to hopefully address some of those concerns that came up through committee work. So I know in the budget is the ADA access and remodel at city hall. As you know, this city was awarded a PI waiver agreement to remodel the city hall. The estimates at the time, which we don't have a full engineering designs, but at the time, it was estimated about 900,000. That was about two years ago. 1.25 million might be a little more realistic at this point. But I think also in that, hopefully we can carry the roofing that's needed at city hall. So that's in the budget. The community center HVAC, I know that is really something that in the course of June, we went ahead and did an appropriation for that. And we know that the estimates are going to exceed 180,500, but there'll be a city match post bid likely for that. Expenditure appropriations for the urban campground, the budget does include 120,000 altogether, and that's 75,000 in the current year and another 45 in the next year. At the time, I didn't realize there was a hazmat cost, so we'll need to consider that on there. And that's, but I know work's being done in that area. Included in the budget is the Carnegie Library Planning Grant or CTPG grant award for 250,000. One thing important to Public Works was the electric gates for Lower Greenhorn Park. And then we also set up over the summer, the Bateman Fund for code enforcement for property cleanup, so they started addressing those and feel like that they could get a court order, but then have the funds, so that we set up a new fund, Fundo 5, for 100,000. And then South Oregon Stip is included in there, as well as replacement of the underground utilities for water and sewer. We don't have full engineering estimates on those underground utilities, but we've, I've cross-checked with Public Works and they felt like what we have set aside for those is, would be adequate. We have Highway 3, based on engineering estimates, we have the East Lennox and Filter Plant upgrades. And we have the EDA custom market study, grant study. And we have a full 15 sworn officers fold, folded in with the cost of police personnel. And recently, some areas that came to light, not include the budget, but could still be areas for discussion is, I missed your meeting, but it sounds like there's some interest in promoting some, allocating some funds for tourism and the community events. As we mentioned, there's not in the budget. I didn't allocate the brownfields cleanup, not that estimate yet. And also in the budget, another area for discussion is the ever-growing unfunded liability for the city's pension. By 2025, we'll be funding a million dollars at the beginning of the year. And that doesn't include the employee match, so it's growing. It was 755,000 this year, and it is, it is dramatically increasing. So think of that as debt. And then finally, from the current year forward, is how, kind of, we're almost at that structural deficit. And the general fund is how to either earn our way out or unspend our way out. So earn, you look at revenue opportunities or unspent, meaning what cuts might be needed. So that's kind of the grim news, but I also want to call out in the budget, so this is just kind of the recap of the numbers. But the, the kind of the bright spot in all this is that we have received ARPA funds. When I say ARPA, that's American Rescue Plan Act. We tend to talk in acronyms. And with the revenue loss, I'm not shaking in my shoes, is that we feel like we will be able to earn quite a bit of this deficit by recognizing revenue in the revenue loss model as allowed by the federal grant program from the Department of Treasury. And so we are able, over the next four years, to run a revenue loss model, which is kind of complex, which revenues are included, excluded, and the look back period, and it switches as part of it from fiscal year to calendar year. So you kind of had to do all the adds and pluses and minuses. But as you, in July, we did receive just under 900,000 in our first allocation. Now, all of, that's now being recognized as unrealized revenue because we haven't gone through the process of realizing it. But if you took that and you divided it over the four years, you could earn it, you can kind of see in the chart that could help you start finding your way out of unspending or earning more, more revenue. So it gives you a little time on that too. And also some of these one times.
Arthur, I think we're on the next slide, right?
Yep.
Hypothetical revenue.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. So that's kind of, I think for a lot of cities where we didn't have a lot of direct costs, some of the urban areas with COVID, it really does give us some, some good places to land in working through these, these needs. I wanted to touch real briefly on kind of the org chart, and please know this is draft, because it's, one thing is it's evolving. It's a little more dynamic than it's ever been, but it is evolving. And so at this point, you're, you kind, they are, our discussions are kind of like reassessing some of the titles and positions. And for example, my position in administrative services, you know, kind of breaking that apart and creating the HR director position and simplifying what I do. And spinning off, I, information technology, it may come back under finance at a future point. It may stay standalone. We do contract for services, but there is a lot of overhead for administering and ensuring compliance. And then also, there's some discussions as to, through the recent recruitments, whether or not the structure go back from a community development director to a planning director. So by the time this publishes, I hope that we've got this locked in. And Police Department really hasn't changed. They just, they have a lot of, lot of spots to fill, but I know they're working hard on that with HR. And Chief Billman's actively recruiting. And also Public Works, a lot of their seats are getting filled on the best, so to speak. And I think they're really going to have a strong structure as well through some of the changes and shifts being done. And we have our Frat Chief, and I really give him credit because it's extremely challenging running a department on volunteers. And he does that very successfully. So I did also want to call out in the budget, did the budget contemplate a dollar increase or call out to the volunteers? So it's a dollar per call that they would receive. It's really monetarily not that big, but I think recognition wise, it's huge. So.
What does that make it? A dollar per call makes it how much?
1350. So I'm going to take a break and find out if anybody has questions, or Randy, if you wanted to add anything. No? And so the kind of the next part of the presentation is going to touch on kind of where things are for capital projects. Because the M and O kind of is just moving along, not a lot of noise in the, what I call M and O, which is maintenance and operations and the personnel. And we will look at personnel a little bit because there were some positions restored and or added. So we restored an officer, as you may recall, restored the OIT position, as you recall. And we have two contract positions that were added for the grant fiscal compliance manager and the construction. Let me get the right title on that, because I always mess it up. Construction field tech and water wastewater evaluator. So within the general fund, this is non-grant driven, this is just coming from general fund resources. We have 25,000 for major building maintenance. At city hall, it could also occur at any of the other facilities. For police, we have a vehicle in 21, 22, and 22, 23. We also have the vehicle that's going to be fully reimbursed by the tribe as well. And we have munitions of 25,000 in 21, 22. In the parks, we have the park gates that we, automatic park gates that we talked about, playground and fall protection material in the parks. And grants, next slide. Thank you. And this one, for the audience, I apologize, it's a little hard to read here. But under our special grant, capital grants and planning grants, we still have a little bit of the SB2 planning grant and the 2020 LEAP planning grant that are still in process, that are being fulfilled. We, and the estimates of what's remaining was based on, at the time of presenting this, of how much had been spent. So, and then we have the South Oregon Stip, that project, we have 924,000, or excuse me, 75,000 this year in planning and then actual construction in 22, 23. Of about 924,000. We have two little RSTP projects that we're expecting will get done this year in 21, 22, 93,000 for the Greenhorn pedestrian striping and the Yama Street ADA curves. In the flood corridor, again, this could be dynamic, because I know there's a special meeting, talked about the FHR grant. Estimating about a million per year, but I know that will probably change based on maybe scope of work changes. The EPA Brownfields grant, about 75,000, that's really variable upon the projects presented for them to do assessments on. The EDA grant for 250,000, kind of got a little bit of late start, but I think it's on its way. So it could be estimating kind of split 50, 50, 100, 25,000 between the two years. It could accelerate and they could do more in 21, 22. I think all of us are more ambitious than we're able to fulfill in any one fiscal year. And then also the Carnegie Planning Grant, 125,000 in each year. Again, it could vary between how much is spent each year. And these have matching revenue sources with them. So and you know what? There is the Old Goals Grant that didn't print out on this, I think. So I apologize on that. There's the Old Goals Grant in there that should be on this listing, so I just wanted to call that out. And there'll be a city match on that. So I think I printed that. This is an older screenshot, so I apologize. And on the community development projects, we have, this is kind of through that PI waiver application. So we have 500,000 from the PI waiver, and we're expecting that'll probably take another 750,000 to complete the project. And that would be transfers in from the enterprise funds for their beneficiary use of AD access for utility billing for city hall and things like that. And then under the economic housing unrestricted, there's 100,000 for a bus replacement for drone hospice, the other 75,000 is for the urban campground. And then in 22, 23, 45,000 for the urban campground. So I just kind of wanted to call out a little bit where that is, knowing that there'll still be some money that needs to be allocated. Water capital projects, a lot of, a lot of big home action there on those water projects. And good news today, we closed the bank anticipation notes for 6 million, 98,000. So that's nice to know that's done, hopefully. That's for the interim financing for the USDA highway highway 3 certificate of participation. For water capital projects, let me see that out though, 375,000, that's for their share of the city hall remodel that gets transferred to the other fund. The water distribution, the unrestricted, that's what we have pursuant to our USDA bond agreements for small equipment replacement. And that follows the water rate study estimates. The USDA highway 3 water improvements, not knowing quite how much will split across each year, about total project cost is about 2.5 million in 21, 22, and 22, 23, about 1.7 million. We do have 3.5 million coming in for the rate work with Public Works on getting that funding in for that. And then we also will have some Caltrans cooperative agreement for revenue coming in. So looks kind of bad with that cap, but it's not as bad as it initially was. South Oregon Stip, we expect that for the water mains, about 300,000 again, once the engineering plans are more refined on that, that could address. Water Prop 1 grants, looking at, so in the water distribution side, about in resource 6040, 1.7 million rounded in 21, 22. And that one's out currently for bid. And the water supply and treatment, that also includes the improvements for the filtration plant. And that also together, both of those are on the street right now. I think bids close in a few weeks. So moving along on those. And any questions on those?
Hopefully, well, hopefully, Mr. Mayor, hopefully we'll have funding coming in for the pool. But if we are awarded that, that's 100%, there's no match.
Right, right. And that's a great point. And I just wanted to call out that grant applications by themselves are usually not budgeted. We usually budget those once the grant has been awarded and the city council accepts it. So for all the terms and conditions, and then we get fired up, because it's exciting. Wastewater Capital Projects, again, the outgo, 375,000, that's a transfer out to, for the city hall ADA improvements. The unrestricted is again from the rate study for small, what they call small assets for replacement fund. And then our big USDA highway 3 sewer project, and we have 6.3 million funded. We have for the South Oregon Stip for the underground utilities for sewer, 300,000. And then this is a great grant, another one, the wastewater Prop 1 planning grant, or excuse me. Or excuse me, it's a sewer collection system improvement, that's a five point five million dollar grant. And that was awarded. There's an additional seventy thousand of kind of carryover costs in case it runs over with commodity prices. And that one was recently awarded. There are also some other grants that we should be getting award letters any day on. Again, we'll budget those once we get the word letters and accept the grant. And that's another sizable project, so you've heard us talk about that, and that has to do with storage tanks. Replacement of tanks. So, and then five sixty unrestricted, again, small equipment replacement. So that's kind of some of the big, big line items in the budget that were covered. And we've kind of talked a little bit on the staffing way it's gone out by four F T Es and what do those people or what those positions are. And then finally, it's kind of like, who watches us? A lot of people watch the city of Puerto Rico. I just kind of wanted to call out both federal state agencies and do that, and the state controller or this, excuse me, the state auditor's office also is doing metrics on your performance and publishing these report cards, basically on how your city is doing. And trying to give more citizen centric kind of perspective of how their city is doing on things. So kind of when they got on the big transparency disclosure for salaries and compensation, there's also now this big push for transparency disclosures on cities and how they're doing. So the good news is, you know, they measure us as low risk, but you can also see that, you know, they're calling out areas that they have from our financials areas of concern, and that's our debt burden and our future pension costs. So just, I'm not as concerned about our debt burden because they may not have factored in that we have special revenue for part of our debt. For example, Measure H and also the debt to the county for the landfill access fee also has a revenue source on that. So really, our new general fund debt is our P D station that doesn't have any a specific revenue source other than the spillover of the Measure C benefits on that. But, and I think probably almost not, I shouldn't say, I'm sure many cities have the future pension cost red button on them. I don't think we're alone in that.
Did you have a question? Reda, what is the difference between O P E V funding and O P E V obligation? And one of my sewer yellow, one of my sewer green. That's why I ask.
Sure, obligation is what we've negotiated to give away for benefits. And the funding is how much have you made a contribution to your trust fund to cover those benefits? Given the dates on this and the lag time, I think you would see these go to green next year for the city. Because I think we're just had the tipping point of where we're almost a hundred percent funded. And if, well, before interest rates plummeted, so we had a chance of almost being sustainable on that, on the go forward. So that's kind of my presentation, and I just kind of wanted to open it up to council members on kind of concerns they had, ideas they have, and where we want to go from here. So this is your workshop.
Yes.
Just a general question on the deficit. So looking at the general overall deficit, it's come down quite a bit since the first time we saw it, so thank you for that. Thank you to our department heads too, because I know it's always hard to cut. But it looks like so we've got five hundred and forty-three thousand, five sixty-seven and twenty-one, twenty-two. And then three eighty-four, forty-eight and twenty-two, twenty-three, so that adds up to nine twenty-four. That's almost a million dollars, it's a little over nine hundred thousand dollars. So I heard you say that our funding may be able to help us cover some of those expenditures if they are specific expenditures that are within certain way. So how much of this nine hundred thousand you think that we'll be able to cover without having to dip into our reserves?
I would say there's a good chance you'll recover at least eighty percent of it through the existing model of revenue loss. And you leave, unless there's been language different, you don't need to go through any further substantiation than this model being audited on your model and that being found correct in your calculations.
However, the ARP A money, we cannot count on being part of our budget. It cannot, yeah, it can't, it should not be figured in, and it should not, when it comes, it'll come, but it'll come for last year. It'll come for the preceding year.
I just was on the phone with our auditor before this meeting, because I'm kind of like, how are you gonna, how, when are you going to define that we recognize that? And he was unclear, and I'm just like, that's not the answer I wanted to come in for this evening with. But the model looks at your revenue loss for calendar year twenty twenty. The allocation was in our fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The cash received was in July of twenty-one, but that still follows our modified accrual convention for accrual. He's saying, however, that it may need to be recognized in twenty-one, twenty-two. And I said, if you could get back to me, you know, as soon as possible, that would be very helpful on, on how we close our budget. So at this point, I'm hesitant to include it in the budget for two reasons at this point. It is on our books, it's in cash and unearned revenue. And it's just when it's recognized. I'm sure we'll recognize a good deal of it through this revenue loss. And if you do, if you don't, aren't able to satisfy it through revenue loss, my recommendation would be attach it to an existing federal project where you can need to augment. Because you're going to have to have all those federal overlays on a project of social, social justice of, you know, vendors being, you know, your maybe we be in all your overlays or federal money. So you want to be careful that you can spend it without a whole lot of additional new overhead. So if you have an existing federal project and need to need augmentation on it, I would recommend that. But again, it's council's decision.
Yeah, what you're recommending, basically, when you say augment, it just can't supplant anything that we're doing, that it can't be used to supplant anything.
Right, but it can augment where the city was matching. For example, if we had a million dollars where we needed a million dollars on one of these highway threes that were reusing federal funds already. And we're doing like with U S D A has all the federal overlays or with C D P G, those are federal dollar, pass-through dollars, those have all the overlays. That might be a place to look. I do think we're, we will be able to hold it in the general fund. Because remember, our enterprise funds have fee revenue, they were climbing for these things. Our general fund is, is where I think we would have some benefit on that, but we are going to need to look forward in how to with these growing expenses and our labor costs increasing and our pension costs, when I say labor costs, it's salary, it's pension, it's workers' comp is not going down, it's just going up. Those are expensive ticket components of payroll.
Thank you. Yeah, that was right.
So, so, so that's the good news and the bad news, right? So, so if it impacts federal funding, then we cannot supplant, as, as Council Member McQuay said, that we could augment the deficit by using it that way, even if it's payroll.
What I'm saying is you would earn it through the revenue loss, you aren't assigning it to any one item, you would just earn it through your revenue loss. And it's, it's a fairly clean way to earn it through that revenue loss model if you can. I would strongly recommend that, keeping it in the general fund because you do have some, some substantial cost cutting to do for revenue generation to look forward to at this point.
To look forward to.
It can be done, it's just, you know, and, and again, I applaud you wanting to work with our city manager on strategic planning, because now's the time to plan, because it takes four years to get some of these things to fruition on this. You've made some measured steps on the development impact fee, that's, I still would want to consider storm drainage system. That's a burden on the general fund, there is no revenue for that. Even if you get your M S four made waiver, you still have the storm drainage infrastructure to support. So it's gonna be a lot of, lot of thought process on how, how the city will emerge through all this, but the nice thing is you have some revenue to allow you a little more flexibility in that. But it's not sustainable for long periods of time.
Yes.
Because we have such large expenses coming up with Highway Three and some other major projects. Is there any way we can postpone, even though, I feel, I don't know about the rest of you, but I feel a little overwhelmed that there's so many projects going on at the same time that require so much attention. It would be nice if we could say the next two and a half years focused on the Highway Three, which we really don't have that much control over the timeframe at all. And not say no is some of these projects, but when we get Highway Three done and the dust settles, does it make sense to postpone the remodel of City Hall here of the Ringy Pool fill-in, that kind of stuff?
So the Ringy Pool was cut from the budget.
Yes.
So in this, since that's kind of a postponement of sorts. The City Hall, I think you probably could, you would just need to update your grant agency why you aren't moving forward on it. But perhaps some of the engineering or, excuse me, design work, you could go out in our P for design.
I'm just trying to think of what projects we can put on hold just till we get our finances better controlled.
Well, I think Joan might as a comment there, but like I said, on some of that depends on grant fundings too.
I will.
Watch out the timeframe. We should postpone what we can, but.
It really is.
Joan, do you have a comment on that?
Oh, yes, I, I have some pretty strong feelings on that, I know. So we've been talking about doing some kind of an upgrade remodel or something with City Hall. And I would really like to see us move forward incrementally, I mean, even if we can't afford the whole thing, but somehow. For instance, I don't know how many of you, I mean, I know we come in and out of here all the time, I don't know how many of you notice how shabby City Hall looks. It looks bad. This is a matter of city, city pride. I would really hate to see us put it off for another six years, most of us won't be here. But I just.
You're not, don't, you're not kicking a bucket, are you? Wait a second.
Who knows? I, I do notice that, you know, they, they, the public works did, you know, do some work right over there on that. Where they call that facial board. But if you notice when you come in on this side, oh, bad, it's really, it's really bad. And I have had people, especially new people coming to town, ask us, you know, why our city hall looks so bad? So I understand, and I know when you, my home family budget, when you haven't got money, you cut back on food, whatever you need to. Eat the basics, you don't have steak, hamburger, tuna. But by the same token, I would really, on an important project like that, at least to me, I would like us to at least incrementally move forward if we can. I'd hate to see us just wipe it off the floor.
I wouldn't want to wipe it off, but what I was what I was thinking, I was trying to pull up any projects that aren't mandatory specifically to the function of the city. Not that anything we're requesting is a luxury item, it's just that the, if there's any way to play with the times.
So I guess main question, since you brought it up, I would like to bring up the City Hall remodel. Is there already grants in progress, right, to where we can get some funding?
Right, we have an allocation from, from twenty eighteen of the program income on that. In the word letter.
Right.
I believe the word letter, I could be wrong, I just looked at it today, I believe it's twenty nineteen. The, the letter, the award letter was given in twenty nineteen.
Could all move to the new police station. And we'll have a nice, pretty new building.
So on that, what, is there time constraints on that?
I would have to check with Cindy, has the project management on that? I think we do need to show some signs of life along the way for it. The other thing, I think, you know, there is a lot of compression right now with deadlines on these capital projects. And I know the project managers now just got some Microsoft project so that we can start managing against the deadlines. And looking at how we're doing, because you need to be working collaboratively with your granting agency. If you aren't going to make one of these, you need to be working closely with them in either asking for contractual extension. No matter how nice they are, when you miss them, if you're under contract, it's kind of a problem.
Yeah. So I guess getting back to City Hall one too, because my, my major concern with the City Hall one was more ADA accessibility more than anything. I don't, beautification, I mean, we can put a slap a coat of paint on it, make it look pretty, whatever, but and make the function of it, you know, the roof and fix all those sort of things. But we've already entered a certain stage on it to where we've, the engineering part of it, but is there any way we could scale back on any of that and still be okay?
I think you just need to go through the design and engineering to, or design and architectural design, excuse me, to get an estimate of cost. I think there were just preliminary drawings done by Guy Fryer and kind of swag number.
Like I said, my main thing on the whole City Hall was ADA accessibility more than anything.
It's gonna get us eventually.
Right, it'll, it'll be a grand jury or something.
Oh yeah, there's nothing, if your front counter is not proper height, the bathrooms aren't ADA equipped, I mean, there's a whole list of things that aren't ADA compliant on this hall right now.
There's some great, there was some great great brainstorming that was done, I thought, I thought the plans were really nice.
Yeah. Now, you haven't seen any of that, have you, Corey? No, so that's something that we need to get for Corey, and you've, you've seen it, have you, you have not either, Paul?
You know what, that should be, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that should be part of our strategic planning.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they should, they should have that ahead of time, though, definitely, so they even, so they can be brought up to speed on that, for sure. Yes, Ms. McQuay?
What I would respectfully request from Council Member Baird is a an idea, I mean, because I think what she's, what she's saying in theory is very, very true. The dilemma is, how do you cut back on, say, an HVAC system that we've drug our feet on for the last fifteen years? How do you cut back on a pool that we drug our feet for the last twenty years and done nothing about it? But I would respectfully request, because I think it's a good idea, a cost benefit, time benefit analysis based on if we pull certain projects, how much is that going to help the city in the cost or in the timing of getting these projects done? And if the one project that we're aiming at in this, by cutting things back, is the highway project, I'd like to see how it speeds it up, how it, how it changes it. I mean, I think, you know, I think we need to look at it as opposed to poo-pooing it. I'm not advocating one way or the other, but if you're going to look at it, you need to look at the whole thing, and you need to cover apples and apples and oranges and oranges. Thank you.
No, I agree. Yes.
One of the other issues I was concerned with is that what we've suggested to Caltrans that we wanted to add to the project is the, it's gonna draw the money down. Whereas if we don't have any money to draw from, or if that's not a line item at this point, which I don't think it is.
It is not at this point.
Yeah. So we'll have to pull that out of our hat also. And if we're already over budget, something's got to give somewhere. And I'm not saying abandon these issues. I'm saying how many, how many expenses can we juggle at one time? And I think we've passed our limit. So I, I'm okay with more discussion on what the priorities might be. It's just that I'm throwing some ideas out there that doesn't interfere with the city functioning the way it should. So it has to be something on sidelines.
And, and we did expect this compression of capital projects all kind of coming at the same time. And that's, that's why Rob is on there for construction oversight. That's why Josh is on staff to make sure we stay on track from physical compliance side. So, but it doesn't mean that there's not some pressure out there to meet them.
Yes. The number one cost we have in operating the city is labor. Okay. So if you're looking at this, I was looking at it around two hundred thousand dollars for the highway for planters. Fifteen thousand dollars for the chambers, what they asked for at our last meeting. Five thousand dollars for Friends of the Museum. For the urban campground, I would say, you know, if we're looking at something that is if we're looking at something that is contaminated and we're going down. Yeah, I don't understa-, I don't know, because I don't know that we've heard from our public works director, but I had they had said from six to twelve inches from one end of the campground to the other, or six to eighteen inches initially. So you could be looking at a hundred twenty-five to two hundred thousand dollars there maybe, depending on where it has to be hauled and who has to come in and haul it. If there's not a, an approved hauler here. So you know, as we look at this budget, one of the things we may need to look at is where do we cut employees, where do we cut services? It's not my favorite thing to do, but as in schools. A, a city and a school, which I know for thirty years, they don't operate in a business world. They go bankrupt. Because in a business world, you don't have fifty or sixty or seventy percent or eighty percent of your money tied up in employees. You have fifteen or twenty percent. So I mean, I think that as we look at it, we'll look at projects. But we're gonna have to look long and hard at things that might be each of our, I have my own pets that I'd like to see. But we may have to look long and hard at what those pets are and maybe decide where to plug them in later down the road. It's not gonna be fun and, and people are not going to be happy with this. And if we're running for reelection. You know, you just have to vote the way you think is the best for the city.
Long term for the city for sure. Unfortunately, is we don't have a, a budget that is unexpendable. Yes.
I have one more question about the urban site.
Yes.
Do we have the option and would it be more cost effective to pave the area and encapsulate the contamination? Is that less expensive?
Well, the problem is we can't pave it because it kind of defeats the purpose of the campsite. Well, it's kind of hard to pitch a tip.
Oh, well. No, but there are other options as far as that goes.
Right. Well, the other option. Yeah, I don't know at this stage of the game that there's the other option. I already identified as a problem.
We could encapsulate it with concrete or
Right.
or asphalt. The one thing I remember in the summertime would be beastly hot. Because asphalt absorbs, it's gonna absorb the heat and, and concrete is gonna reflect it, but it's still gonna be hot. So I mean, yeah, if you are just encapsulating it, we wouldn't be going through all this. Like if we were putting in a parking lot, wouldn't be worrying about it.
Exactly.
So yeah, that's a good question.
But I don't know how else we could do it and still be able to set up as far as a campsite. How we, how do you, how does that picture look? I don't know.
Well, it still will have regulated areas of where they can be, could stripe it or whatever. And tents can be held down with the products that are inside of it. So it doesn't have to be a stake in the ground kind of thing. But if it doesn't, if it isn't cost effective, I'm just saying.
No, it'd be cost effective on that aspect. I'm just not sure if I follow how we can secure the tents down. Because like I said, just putting stuff inside of it. Well, if they go away and they're not at that point in time and they're taking their belongings with them. There's nothing to hold it down and it, big wind comes up and it flies off. So I don't know.
Well, there's eye hooks, such a thing as eye hooks and, and poured product.
I guess we could, yeah, figure out some way of doing some type of hook system, I guess, into the pavement or concrete. Other option, I'm just not.
I'm, I'm sure there's an answer. I might not know it or we might not know it here, but I do think that's an option. Not only would it be quick, but.
It, it is gonna be hot though, in the summer.
Yeah.
Very, very hot. So you may lose your campers in the summer and then they come back in the winter.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Mayor. So regarding that, either or, have we gotten any figures back yet? Has Public Works gone out to bid to find how much it's actually gonna cost to take that lead out?
We're in the process of that. At the present time, I'm working with two council members on options for development of the site and creating something that will be an acceptable permanent
Right.
site for the homeless. We aren't prepared to answer those questions at this moment. There's an engineering issue with getting the final bid or actually an RFP out to get a bid for soil removal. If soil removal is gonna be the way to go. You know, you suggested there may be options for the soil. Certainly that's been suggested. So we'll have to study those and bring you a report and we're in the process of doing that. It should be to you very quickly.
Because I think we need that in order to approve a budget. We need to have numbers, don't you think?
Well, there's a lot of projects out there. It would be nice to have numbers on here. Some of this just doesn't happen because we wanted to. In this case, we have an engineering firm that's essentially going to sites where the soil could be disposed of and negotiating a cost for you know, whatever unit of soil is going to go there. And then we'll bring that back and tell us this is the estimate you should use when you go out to bid. Without having that type of information, we can't assure those who have companies that will actually transport contaminated materials over state highways. Will bid. I mean, they have to know that we know what we're doing and they have to know that we can afford to do it. So we're in that process of developing that at the present time.
Definitely look into, like you said, paving. Oh, look into whatever, you know, try to figure something out. The thing about, even, even bringing in some type of ground cover of some sort, even six inches or whatever layer would that?
It would have to be asphalt. And asphalt as a foundation for people camping is probably a non-starter. And I think you'd come to that conclusion.
Well. Well, yes, but I'm not saying just have them roll their sleeping bag on it. I, I have seen paved areas with little eight by ten storage units converted into housing developments that are on top of it. And people can walk on that with their shoes and that kind of thing. Also a structure over the top, some kind of a.
Into that for the future because a lot of the trees we're gonna have to prune up to a certain stage and some of them may not be the most suitable for a long term. So we will be looking at some type of covered structure probably for the future anyways too. As far as that goes, right now we're hoping to utilize the, the trees and whatnot.
We're getting into details now.
Yes.
And I'm just saying, we're not prepared to present you details.
Correct.
And on top of that.
All we'd be doing is talking about what we think is gonna happen. So prefer to bring you a proposal.
No. So in conjunction to that too, we, you know, we, with the budget wise, we have to start somewhere with some type of numbers. And thing about that too is going down the road, we can always amend the budget and tweak it a little bit that way too. So you know, the thing about that is things that we need to, things that we can discuss and tweak that are as much substantial, because we need to figure out what we can tweak. We need to discuss that now. If we, if there's nothing that we can really tweak right now, then we need to move forward as, you know, as, as quickly as possible on this, on this budgets, just trying to keep a good faith with all the creditors and people that we have money out there with right now. And we can always go back and amend the budget and get some of this stuff situated. But we, we definitely need to discuss anything we can tweak though, yes.
If I might, on, on page four of Rhett's budget presentation, one of the things that she does point out, and she and I met, I think it was earlier, was it this week, early, yeah, yesterday for a short time. And it's something that she's trying to get through my skull. And I think we all need to understand that we need to accept the budget, as you said, as a changeable document. And I, I know that I have it, Rhett can tell it when I talk to her. She goes, no, Paul, you gotta, you gotta see it's, it's in change. I never saw it in change in my past government job and that's, that's an issue. And that it is possible to move forward knowing costs, like for the urban campground or pending. And, and we don't necessarily have a good feel for those estimates. Now that being said, it could be that as they move forward, we scratch the money because it's too much. We don't scratch the project necessarily, but we scratched the money because it's too much or we come in and go, oh, it's only instead of X, 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 Y, it's only X, Y dollars. And so it's less. And so we're able to, you know, maybe we'll be pleasantly surprised. But the other thing is if the council as a whole, or at least three of them, feel that when you get to a point where money, where funds need to be appropriated for soil removal of the urban campground, it will be, it would be, because it is a living document, correct me if I'm wrong, because it's a changing, moving document until the, the last day of the year. The council could come to the city manager and to the finance director and say, we, we want to go ahead and put this in. We want to look for another place to to, for lack of a better word, steal it from, you know, to, to take it from. And at that point, we could appropriate. Or again, we could choose not to appropriate. It's not, it's not a, it's not a done, nothing's a done deal.
And I want to add too, as far as this urban campground goes too, once we get something established. I'm very, very confident that I can find through the resources that are available out there, some other type of funding to help with this situation too. Because there is, there is definitely a lot of funding out there and there's more and more funding coming across through the state. State level and some to the federal level too on, on, you know, homelessness. So there's some stuff that I'm very confident, once we get it up and going, that we'll be able to utilize. It's just a matter of getting it up and going. And I know we're getting into details again right now, and so I don't want to.
It's all going to the county.
And most of it goes to county.
Have an agreement with the county to share some of that because we, at this point in time, we are footing the bill. That what appears that we're footing the bill for a lot of the costs. So we've got to come up with some kind of an agreement with the feds and the state and the county.
The county and, and I have me tomorrow, matter of fact, with them. So there's definitely gonna be some discussion on how to move forward with some of this, once we get things up and rolling. So.
But Councilwoman Baird's points are well taken.
Yes.
By me.
Oh.
They're well taken and.
And I when we pass approval budget down the road, to, in my head, I'm thinking, okay, that's our budget. So I do appreciate being reminded that there's some flexibility there and I need to stop sweating bullets.
Right. So you, you know, when we come to you and we have new information, you'll hear a supplemental appropriation. What that's doing is modifying the budget. And in closing the books, what we do is a big recap of those supplemental appropriations all in one document to you. As well as transfers as allowed between programs. Thank you.
So, so ten thousand pound gorilla in the room, at least in my opinion. So we're probably looking at reserves at some time. So what kind of reserves that we have available to us? Not that we would want to spend all our reserves at once, but but we're going to have to balance the budget.
Right.
We, if we don't have a method for it, we will have to take it out of reserves, correct?
Well, you're going to have possibly some earnings of ARPA in there. So as far as how deep you might need to dip in the reserves, this is just a plan I can guarantee you will not close according to the budget. But hopefully we've outlined enough of the estimates that there's no surprise, big surprises on that. There'll be new revenues that come along. What you generally one time. Sometimes we get dividends from SCORE. And things like that that come in one time. We're getting a loan payoff from the EDC building that's coming in. It's closing another one-time revenue. We also have one-time costs that are non-recurring as well. So those are just kind of the dynamics. We recognize those once they come in and then we modify the budget to recognize those new one-time revenues or expenditures as, as approved.
So we still didn't talk about reserves.
About five point five million.
The simplistic answer is absolutely correct. Just like any budget that you have at your home, anywhere else, if you spend too much, that has to come out of something. So if you have savings, has to come out of it. But so far you're only talking expenditures for projects you may or may not want to do, or may or may not want to prioritize. You know, the other avenue you have is to increase your revenues. And I don't know if that's been discussed in a while. But that may be part of doing the strategic plan is to talk about, you know, what other revenues you can get. I think you're only at a quarter of a cent and.
A half a cent.
We're at a half. Half a cent. I worked on that.
Yeah.
We got a half a cent, but that's half of that is for safety, which is split between the, the police department, the fire department. And then the other half is all roads.
You know, you absolutely can't say that because you passed it as a general tax.
That's a general tax. So technically it is not, even though we presented it that way.
Well, you could tell people that and, but the money comes to the council, to the city and then gets spent however the council wants it to be spent. You have an obligation, obviously, because you told people you were gonna spend it a particular way. You have to spend it that way. But if you absolutely called it a special tax and reserved it only for something, then you have to have a sixty-six percent vote to approve.
Exactly.
You approved it on a fifty percent vote.
That's how we got to go through.
If you go out to do, you know, you can go up for another half cent. I think the limit is one cent now.
Right. Crescent City just passed a one cent.
Really?
Sales tax. Yeah.
Yeah. Wow.
But I meant they didn't have the half cent before.
They did not.
So in, in an attempt to balance your budget, you could request the voters approve that for a period of time or for perpetuity. Those, that's one option. I mean, we can look at other options where you might raise revenue if that's what you'd like us to do.
Yeah, I think so. I, I don't know about the rest of you. I would.
I think it's worth discussion if this.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Measure H, we have measure C. You know, we have the, that's the fire department, measure H, measure C is.
We could go through the alphabet.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is we're layering tax upon tax.
You know, a lot of cities have special assessments for lighting districts, all kinds of things. Most have the stormwater fee. There's a lot of.
Addressed. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. So there is a lot of opportunity in revenue development.
The only revenue source that we have addressed has been builder fees.
Development fees.
Development fees, building fees.
You, you have a need to put more money into your parks. You suggested several projects.
Yeah.
And even increased maintenance there. There's parks assessments that can be done. These are things we can bring back to you. Just not now, please.
Right. Yes.
The budget as is.
How about next week?
I'm not sure we can go there because if, if, when, when we get the eight point five million dollars for the pool aquatic center project, there has to be
Yes.
Parks and Rec district put in place.
That's true.
Those fees.
Okay.
Cover the cost of running it.
Of the maintenance, yeah.
So that's going, that would be dedicated.
I, I think what the, the initial plan was to set up a, a special district for parking wreck. Um, and, you know, you could do, also do a special assessment, um, as well for parking wreck. When you do a special district, you are duplicating some efforts of administration and maintenance. So you might not get as much direct benefit as you think you will, whereas a special assessment might not have that duplication of overhead.
And they both have to be passed by the voters.
That's correct.
Right. That's a good point.
You know, I, I think we need to do a lot. Think we need to do a lot better job of informing the community that the expenses of running the city are going up. We're not just going asking for funds. And this budget, I wish more people would have shown up to recognize some of the increased costs that we're dealing with that we never have before, but I know it costs more to maintain my household, and I'm, I'm hoping that the community thinks that, but I think it would not hurt to remind the community that everything's going up, including the cost of government.
That's true, that's very true. Yes, thank you.
Today NPR, on the show, this NPR, this is over often, but our, their outlook was that Medicare is done in twenty twenty-five.
I saw that.
Medicare's done.
Wow.
I thought it was twenty thirty-four.
No, social security is done in twenty thirty-four.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wow.
Medicare's done in twenty twenty-five. So, and a lot of it has to do with a lot of things, but a big is that those less than fifty million workers are retired.
So the rest of us get to pay. Until we die.
The, the point is that, yes, everything is possible.
Yeah. So, yes.
I guess I really don't. I just want to comment on a couple things. I've been sitting quiet, listening. Um, this is my first budget, actually, since taking my seat, so. So Lorenz, yeah, he, appreciate him. He does post the meetings to a large audience, inviting them to come. They don't, so that's disappointing. He's reaching a lot of people and tells them when it's going to be, they should be here, and no one shows up, so. It's disappointing, but thank him for putting that out there. Um, as Councilman McCoy stated, we keep kicking a lot of this stuff down the road. I mean, I've been remember, four years ago, the theater did not have a HVAC system that was out then, so four years later, and you go back to think, four years ago, what would it cost if it was done then? And now it's costing way more money. What's going to cost us if we go down two more years down the road? Double that? Are we going to be in the same position, worse position, if we don't address some of the issues of increasing our revenue or looking other ways, because I just don't see an easy way?
Well, it's like you said, we can't keep kicking this down the road. Swimming pools are prime example, kicking it down the road. Now, we don't have a swimming pool, so. That's prime example, and we're almost the same way with the skateboard park, so. So it's another one of those things that let it go too long, and it's worthless and wasted, and then if we have nothing for our public to enjoy, same with the parks and everything else. We don't keep them, maintain them, then they just, they'll go in the back burner and nothing gets done. And then next thing we know, we don't have any parks or anything for anybody to go. So, yeah, we, we got to keep on. There's a, there's a part of, you know, our job is to keep a certain amount of things up and going to where we have a place to go that we call home, but this is part of our home. Green Horn Park is part of our home. These, those sort of things. Ringy Pool was part of our home, you know, that we grew up on. Wanted the, the kids to share, and we lost that. So these things, we should keep kicking them, kicking them behind and don't do anything about, then next thing you know, we don't have anything for anybody to come back to.
Right. And City Hall was my question. I agree on that totally, is I don't want to be having someone come in and say, well, you're out of compliance of ADA, and you're going to do this within two months or three months, and you better have a plan. And we're sitting here going, oh, gosh, we shouldn't have tabled that, you know, because they will do that. They can. So that's what my question was on that, and you touched on it, so I don't know, it's tough. It's not easy, sitting up here.
Perhaps it would behoove us in the short term to have the city manager and staff work on budgeting based on any get, uh, uh, balancing the budget based on information we're giving them tonight, and then have them begin to work on long-term plans to look for more revenue. Where's, wha- whatever that might be, whether it's a half percent or a quarter of a percent of a, or half percent of a tax, or, or a sales tax, wherever. Maybe we need to look at that. Doesn't mean we have to do it.
Right.
I'm not big, I'm not, you know, huge on that. I mean, we already, we're already the second most highly taxed citizens in the nation, um, by state, but, you know, and I hate going to places where you're spending ten, eleven, twelve percent sales tax, but, you know, I, we, we do go there, so we visit. So I just, I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Yeah. So, yeah, I guess at this point, I guess, but the, obviously, uh, we need consensus to move forward, looking for ever, other revenues. If the, if the rest of council would like for them to pursue that for the future, not obviously, not next week, but week after would be fine.
Just kidding, just kidding.
But, yeah.
I'll put it on the top of the list for the new manager.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for Rhett. So Rhett, some of the information that you sent to us from our auditors, and it stated, uh, that we have to have a budget passed in a certain amount of time.
Yes.
So how much time do we have? Because I see that, you know, in here, that you're, uh, talking about having a budget passed by September seventh, and then the meeting. And, uh, if, and if we don't agree on something tonight, then it'll be discussed again. And it may not be until the following meeting, which is like the fourteenth, no, the twenty-first, twenty-first.
Yes.
I think we're right at that tipping point of naming it passed with the debt we're carrying. Um, so, no, it's not an ideal budget, um, but it's a workable budget, and, um, and there is some time, um, because we do have strong reserves. Um, when you get your next treasurer's report, you're going to see there's about twenty-seven million in cash. And cash is equal to reserves less plus or minus receivables and payables, for the most part, or, um, and, um, and some of that's designated, of course. But, um, there, there's, we're in a strong position, and that's, we're better than some cities, you know, I think of whomever um, comes in after Steve, hopefully, or, excuse me, after Randy, I apologize, I really, um, gosh, I was doing so well, and I blew it. Oh, man, okay, what's been, it started about five-thirty this morning. But, uh, and I do apologize, I'm sorry.
He doesn't look like he's taking offense.
Um, anyway, um, Randy's successor should be pleased, coming in with, um, a strong fiscal position.
Yeah.
Um, because they aren't, as you say, taking draconian measures of cutting staffing and things like that. You've got time to work out the problems, but, um, as Randy has pointed out, the budget should be following that strategic plan. Um, and that's where you say, hey, we need some revenue development, whatever you call it, new revenues. Kind of like revenue development, and some quite as bad as taxes, or, or higher rates, or fees. But, um, yeah, you can do that.
Yeah.
You can do that.
I think so.
And, um, you've got a lot of projects, you've got a lot of, um, good grant money, and I say that because it's a lot of infrastructure, you know, improvements that we need. Um, but, you know, when you're, um, asking staff be cognizant of all these new initiatives, that they're still working on all these capital projects and delivery of those. So that is going to be your toughest balancing act, um, for Randy and, um, his successor in, in, you know, managing that, because we need to deliver on those, on those contracts.
And yours is.
And my successor as well, correct?
Exactly.
So, um, I, what's that?
Yeah.
Budgeting, budgeting never is.
Yeah. So I want to, I want to add something to what, you know, we brought up earlier, Corey has bring, you know, brought up about, you know, these projects and getting set on, set behind on the wayside and not getting done and stuff. Part of the reason why we have, uh, this, um, reserves is because we didn't do some of these projects, too. You got to think of that. Reason why, you know, we have a bunch of these reserves, because we didn't do anything with the swimming pool. We haven't done anything with the community center, so that reserves, in a sense, kind of should have been, it was kicking it down the road, and we, if we would have addressed the issues back then, yeah, we wouldn't have as much reserves, but now we're facing, unfortunately, the money that we're facing now. If we would have done them then, would have been less money. So I get it, but we kicked the can down the road so far now that it's cost, that can's gotten expensive. So.
It's gotten expensive, and you have a compression of deadlines. So that's one thing, is you have new initiatives, is, is be cognizant, I would say. Um, because I can say that. But of, of your commitments, you still have on the table to meet, and, and the resources that are required to meet those, so that's, um, that's the balancing act that I think, um, everybody's working through.
So one of the thing, Rhett, because one of the questions I know, I know, maybe, maybe I missed it. I think Joan asked, how much do we have in reserves?
I thought she answered that, which you said twenty-seven million.
Yeah, about twenty-seven million in cash, and I, I can pull a thoughted.
That's fine.
And give you the reserves. Yeah, um, general funds, about five point five million.
Is it all funds or general?
Just general operating. And then there's capital reserves, and there's, it's, there's all kinds of different reserves. And if I had the audit in front of me, maybe, Arthur, can you go to CIY Rico, CAUS, and go to finance tab? And pull up the, um, audit.
For our transparency. This is what Rhett has been working on for years, transparency. So five point five million, I heard her say, for general fund.
Right.
So that's, I don't want to say we can use all of it.
Oh, it's under departments, and under finance. And y'all are, at any point can go in, audit their financial statements. Let's go back one more, there you are. And let's look at the twenty-twenty audit of financial statements. And then you're going to kind of scroll down past the M D N A, so about twenty pages. Sorry. But anyway, there's a page in there that just kind of outlined to reserves by function, by what, whether they're designated. Um, keep on going, Arthur. It's going to be quite a while here. And keep on. Basic financial statements, okay. And excellent, sorry. Unbalances here, you have a city. Balances. You have non-spendable, restricted, assigned, and assigned. I know, uh, between the general fund, you can maybe bring that up a little bit, thank you so much. Um, you can kind of see, um, and assign five point six million, has that been posted?
Okay. Yeah.
Um, thank you, Randy.
Yeah, thank you.
But, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to, uh, speak for myself, in that I think Rhett, you've done a good presentation tonight.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I would recommend that the council think seriously about this budget with, again, with city and Rhett looking back, seeing if they can tweak it and fine tune it some, and, and I would recommend that we do our best, as, uh, Joan Smith Freeman said, to live within our means. But I think it's, I think it's a good budget as it sits. I think there are good numbers there, and, and I would recommend that as we move forward, that we, you know, you know, just, i- if she, if you come back with, to us with, you know, other tweaks or things like that, that, you know, that I, I think that it's something that we could probably pass. I think we're close to that right now.
Yeah, we're close to, obviously, tonight, we can't vote on that, obviously.
No, we, no, 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 I understand that, but I mean, we also don't want to, we, we want to try to not throw any money at it right now, because the whole idea behind the reserves is what happens if, God forbid, we have a million or two million dollar, something that comes up, and we've got to, you know, do it right away. I mean, I, I mean, like a, like a road or something like that, or a bridge, so.
Well, we just, we don't know on the whole Caltrans project, too, for one thing, if that's so much still up in the air, but, but, yeah.
Well, I, I think, um, so just so I make sure I understand, if you're looking at, um, about five hundred, um, is it five hundred and thirty-six thousand?
Yeah.
Out of general fund, that's pretty severe. That's very severe. Um, so I would, um, I would need some guidance from the city manager of where that could be accommodated. And I'm not sure that's necessary, given that you have the ARPA funds right now. So, um, we can, we can certainly, um, go back again, and, um, evaluate, but that is, is pretty, very aggressive right now.
Thank you so much, Rhett, for everything, all your long hours of working.
I can just, yeah, give direction to the city manager on what you'd like to see with that, because that's.
I think at this point, is we have the consensus that, that the council to move forward on what's presented then. Is that's correct? Is there any other questions? And then if there's any, obviously, uh, tweaks in the future, we can amend the, 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 this, the budget at this point in time, but right now, just move forward, um, bring it back, and so we can vote on them. I think, I think we, unless. Yeah, I'm sure there will be, but.
But the budget that we pass, it's my understanding, if I may, Mr. Mayor. It's my understanding, we can't pass by law a deficit budget. By law.
No, that's not the case. You can spend your reserves as part of your plan.
That's my point.
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we can't say this is a minus five hundred and forty-three thousand, or minus nine hundred and twenty-four thousand.
I'm sorry. Yes, you can't do something that shows your fund, if it's a general fund, is left in a deficit, but you have five million dollars.
Reserve, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, you're having a one-year budget that's going to eat into that, um, unbalanced, but that's, it's not a deficit spending program, uh, I think is the term they use. And the other thing, I, I was going to interrupt a while ago, but I didn't want to extend the meeting, so I'll do it now.
It's only seven fifty.
There, there is no legal requirement that you adopt a budget. Okay, that's not in law, that's. The legal requirement, as I understand it, is that every two weeks you adopt, or, I'm sorry, you pay your bills. Okay, that's the end of the legal requirement. However, you have all of your programs, bonds, and everything else out there, who require you to present them a budget, who require you present to them.
Right.
Okay, and they want to see copies of that, and many of those funding programs set a deadline date
Yeah.
for those documents to be presented to them to show that you are doing your fiduciary responsibility for the city.
Exactly.
So, yeah, we'd like to get this adopted as quickly as we can, immediately move on to, uh, having Rhett get the audit report done, uh, for last, last year, not the current year.
And then set a date for our strategic planning.
Sure.
We need to set a date for our strategic planning, because as Rhett has said, we need to plan exactly how we're going to do it, and then tweak accordingly.
Assuming on September seventh, you adopt a two-year budget.
Right.
Okay, after that, you adopt a strategic plan. Staff will work diligently to try and show that the budget follows the treaty, treaty plan, but the likelihood that it follows it well is, you know, that's out the window.
Right.
Okay, so what we really need to hear in the strategic plan is what do you want to do?
Right.
Okay, and then we'll go back and, like we said, amend the budget.
Yep.
Figure out how we could do it, and, yeah, I agree.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? Questions, comments, and by anybody, then we'll just adjourn the meeting.
So we, we need direction.
And I think.
Put it on the September seventh.
Correct, September seventh, I'm sorry, I didn't give a date, yes, BS. Thank you.
Find any more savings you can, no.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, we did, we had a, a great cleanup day. We had a lot of stuff that was, uh, cleaned up, and man, it was, blackberry bushes are out of there now. Yeah, those were fun. We actually ripped them out. Yeah, those were fun. We actually ripped them out with the truck mostly. Yeah, so we got all the posts and all those out of there, but, yeah, it was a good, it was a good cleanup day. It worked out really nice, so. Any other, any other councilman comments?
It would be good to thank, uh, Reta for her presentation of her last city budget.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, that's right. Oh, my goodness.
I wish I was showing you the budget with the million dollars of, you know, excess funds, but we'd find a way to spend it again.
You still got some time, you can, you can pull miracle out.
I think you'll be, um, I think you've got some time to work through these, um, challenges, so.
Well, the ARPA funds will come along.
They will.
Yeah.
You know what, of course, in the past, we didn't have ARPA funds, which is the American
Exactly.
Recovery, no. American Rescue Plan, we never had a, an American Rescue Plan to bail us out.
Now we have ARR in two thousand nine.
Yeah.
Oh, that was before us. Oh, ARR. A-R-R-A.
ARR.
ARR.
Sounds Scottish.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Reta.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you, Arthur.
Yes, adjourned. I already said it, no, I said it once, I just didn't.